Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, Council members Burgoyne, Girbaugh, Sibokaneck, Councilmember Rhodes is absent, and Councilmember Roth and Mayor Protem Tahar are present. From city staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, City Treasurer Bennett, Police Chief Rennick, Fire Chief Heft, Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, our Legal Counsel Mr. Smith, and PCF Director and Superintendent Mr. Skoll. And for the rest of you present this evening, if you'd be so kind to sign in the back, we would appreciate that. I will entertain at this time a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Mr. Burgoyne would like to add one item under the discussion portion of our agenda. It's employee contracts, and that will immediately follow police dispatch. And then I'd also like to add a discussion item, and that will follow employee contracts, and that's water bills and the recent mailing that many of our citizens would have received. Mr. Burgoyne.
And there was a correction to one item where there was a missing page in the fire.
Yep, thank you. And that was actually my next point, which is, at your seat this evening, you should have some additional documentation. One is a memorandum from our fire department dated January 14th from Fire Chief Heft, and it includes a spreadsheet and budget. And then secondarily, I believe there was some documentation distributed by Mary LaRona on behalf of the Celine Area Historic Society. It's their annual report, and that's dated March the 9th, 2014. Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Burgoyne. Are there additional corrections or amendments to the agenda this evening? No, then I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Been moved by Councilmember Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sibokaneck.
No, that was...
Tahar? I apologize. Mayor Protem Tahar. If there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. And at this time, I would seek a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Rhodes.
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Protem Tahar, seconded by Councilmember Roth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. We have two presentations this evening, the first of which is the 2014 Celine Youth of the Year Awards, and I would ask that my Council colleague, Mr. Roth, join me up front, since he's the liaison to the Youth Commission. And Jody Roberts from Parks and Rec.
It's good to be with you all, and thank you all for taking time out of your schedules to be here. So the Celine Youth Council 2014, or is it 2013 is what we're recognizing?
2014.
That's right, okay. So we're here in 2014, but we're recognizing accomplishments and contributions from 2013. So this is the 12th year that the Celine Youth Council has participated in the Celine Chamber of Commerce's Celine Salutes Award, which honors outstanding citizens in our community. Nominees are recognized for their volunteer efforts and should fulfill the following requirements. One, that they initiate change to the betterment of the Celine community. Two, that they sustain participation in extracurricular activities in the last few years. And three, that they not benefit financially from their volunteer efforts. This year, the Celine Youth Council received a record number of nominations for this prestigious award, 15 in all. It was a very difficult decision for the selection committee to choose just one award winner from these exceptional candidates. Rafael Caruso, a senior at Celine High School, was selected as the 2014 Youth of the Year awardee, and he is here tonight and will also be honored at the Celine Salute Ceremony on Friday, March 28th. Rafael, would you please stand for a round of applause? Congratulations, congratulations. Tonight, we are fortunate to honor the 2014 Youth of the Year awardee and all the nominees. They are the best of the best in leadership, academics, music, sports, volunteerism, and community involvement. And they have shown us already how they are preparing to be the leaders of tomorrow, and we expect great things from each one of you. I'm going to now turn it over to Ms. Roberts.
As I read your name, will you please come up to receive your recognition award? Kelly Barbrot.
And then we'll take a picture of the whole group when we're done. Thank you. Elsie Bush.
You're a senior, get used to it. And I just want to mention, each and every one of these students, they're just incredible. If we listed every single thing that they were nominated for, we'd be here till two weeks from now. They are, they're just incredible. They volunteer hundreds of hours in the community. They're all leaders. They're in clubs, sports, top of their class. They're just fantastic, and we're so fortunate to have many of them on Celine Youth Council and to have Celine Youth Council sponsor this program. And last but not least, our award winner for this year, Rafael Carosa.
Do you want to take one gay group picture? That'd be good for the reporter as well. Do you want, where would you like to jump people?
Probably behind this table, I think.
Behind this table.
Let's see Jody on this. If you guys can maintain your position in the line, make sure we can...
Very helpful.
People on...
Mr. Morrow, should I go up down there somewhere?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, this will be a game. It'll be a challenge.
Thank you.
I love... Okay.
I was hoping that was smiling.
There's more phones and cameras.
Thank you, Jody, for coordinating this. And to all the young people, again, congratulations. Thank you for all that you do, and like I said, we expect great things from each and every one of you. Okay, we'll now move on to a presentation from our Legal Counsel, Mr. Smith, regarding personal property tax reform.
So the mayor said I had 10 minutes, and I'm going to stick with that. Let me know if I get longer. In December of 2012, the legislature enacted a number of bills to deal with personal property tax exemptions. Beginning in 2014, there are exemptions for industrial and commercial personal property with a true cash value of $80,000 or less. In 2016, new and previously existing eligible manufacturing personal property would be exempted. And then the legislature also enacted bills providing for replacement revenues to local governments. For nonessential services, there would be a state authority that would distribute a portion of the use taxes. For essential services, if you'll recall, every local government that had police, fire, ambulance, or jail services was going to levy a local special assessment. Additional legislation was obviously needed for that, so there was additional legislation that was needed to address eligibility requirements, procedures for claiming the exemptions, tax increment entities weren't addressed at all in the legislation. There were concerns about the legality of the local essential services assessment. The legislation as adopted at the end of 2012 didn't address the timing of state distributions, the timing for local assessments, the claims of exemptions, and so forth. So the Lieutenant Governor convened a group of interested parties to address that legislation beginning in early 2013. Last fall, Public Acts 153 and 154 addressed the exemption issues, and now we've got 10 bills to address the replacement revenues. So I want to talk about three things: the exemptions, local government replacement revenues, and state government replacement revenues. The small taxpayer exemption applies where the true cash value of eligible personal property located within a local tax collecting unit that is owned by, leased to, or in the possession of an owner or related entity on December 31 of the preceding year is worth less than $80,000. And you'll note that this is a much more robust definition of the exemption than existed at the end of 2012, because as we talked about it then, you'll remember one concern was whether somebody could establish a bunch of LLCs or smaller entities and divide up their personal property to claim the exemption. This will prevent that from happening. Beginning in 2016, there will be exemptions for eligible manufacturing personal property initially placed in service after December of 2012 and to eligible manufacturing personal property that's been in service for at least 10 years. So by 2022, all eligible manufacturing personal property should be exempt. There are laws that now address record keeping, so it provides for taxpayer and assessor record keeping. Assessors can deny claims for an exemption. The assessor corrects the roll, the treasurer issues a correct tax bill, and the denial informs the taxpayer of the right to appeal to the board of review. In addition, the legislation now provides consequences for incorrect claims. For the small taxpayer exemption, there's interest at the rate of 1% per month that's charged. A fraudulent claim is a misdemeanor, can result in jail or fines. Now, the source of local government replacement revenues, at this point, the legislation is proposing a local community stabilization share portion of the use tax, and it will be levied by the local community stabilization authority. Remember, the name of the authority used to be the Michigan Municipal, it was, the acronym was MAMMA, and it was about seven letters long. Now, the local community stabilization portion of the use tax will also provide 100% replacement to local governments. This is a significant difference, because at the end of 2012, it was estimated the replacement would be only 80%. And if you'll look at the legislation as now written, it also says the money received and collected for the local community stabilization share is not state funds, shall not be credited to the state treasury, and shall be transmitted to the authority, so it takes it entirely outside of the legislative process. It's not subject to annual appropriations. The administration of local replacement revenues. Local governments will report their information to county equalization, and the county in turn will report to the Department of Treasury. The Department of Treasury will do most of the calculations for local governments. Tax increment financing entities will have to do their own calculations, because there isn't readily available data for the state to do those calculations. Distributions are now scheduled, so distributions for replacement of July taxes, which is when the city levies its tax, will be in October 15th of that year, and the December tax replacement would be in February 15th of the following year. So it follows basically the same schedule as you would have now for collecting local property taxes. Distribution of the replacement revenues. For fiscal year 13 and 14 and 14 and 15, there's replacement for 100% of debt loss. For cities, for 13, 14, and 14, 15, there's 100% replacement for the local taxpayer loss, but that's not going to be paid until 2016. However, cities are getting reimbursed for that loss where counties, townships, and villages are not. Beginning in 2016, there will be priority payments from the top of the use tax pools for 100% of debt loss, 100% of essential services losses, and 100% of the small taxpayer loss, in addition to 100% of the losses experienced by tax increment financing entities. Beginning in 2020, there's a 5% set aside out of the remaining pool that's going to be distributed based on the proportionate share of industrial personal property values you have in your community compared with the total statewide industrial personal property values. So, and that's based on acquisition cost. It's not going to be a local calculation. That'll all be done by the state, and I'll explain how in just a little bit. And then the remaining funds then for nonessential services will be paid 100% out of that remaining pool. The losses are generally the difference between the then-current personal property collections and what the personal property collections were in 2013. State replacement revenues. State replacement revenues come from two sources. One is a phase out of the tax credits, the mega-tax credits, the brownfield tax credits, and other tax credits that the state had issued over the years. And then there will be a state essential services assessment. It's paid by only those with exempt eligible manufacturing personal property. It's based on the acquisition cost of that property, and the state will apply three millage rates based on the years since acquisition. So if it's one to five years since acquisition, it's a 2.4 mills; six to 10 years, one and a quarter mills; 10-plus years, a little less than a mill. There will be adjustments made for existing tax abatements and exemptions. The Michigan Strategic Fund can also grant abatements or exemptions in certain cases, and it'll be done with a single statewide return and a single payment for all personal property that a manufacturer has in the state. It's essentially a state IFT. Right now, if you get an industrial facilities tax exemption, you pay the tax that's at half the rate. This is at less than half the rate, and essentially works the same way. Okay, the benefits of the current plan. For businesses, it exempts small taxpayers from paying personal property tax, and the Lieutenant Governor at one time estimated that 70% of the taxpayers fall in this category, and they pay between 5 and 10% of the personal property tax. So it makes a lot of sense to exempt them. Eventually, all eligible manufacturing personal property will be exempt. There will be a simple exemption procedure. You simply file an affidavit for eligible manufacturing personal property. It's a one-time thing. For the small taxpayer exemption, it's an annual affidavit. The state essential services assessment for businesses should result in at least a net 80% reduction in taxes. There will be a single state return and a single payment. For local governments, it provides 100% replacement, takes the administration out of the state's budget process with a set formula, so the authority will simply distribute the funds based on that set formula, and it doesn't go through the state's annual budgeting process. And it should reduce the administrative burden for personal property tax. And for everybody, it avoids the local essential services assessment. That's a big deal for both business and local governments, because if you had a business that was in a village, for example, you could get an assessment from the village, from the township, from the fire authority, from the ambulance authority, and from the county, it was possible. In some cases, there were up to five local assessments that were going to be given. There was an individual cap for each business. There was a community-wide cap, and it was immensely complicated. So this is a whole lot easier for everybody. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Mr. Burgoyne.
What are the remaining hurdles to full enactment?
It's been passed by the Senate in one version, although that version is changing. In fact, there are substitute bills that are supposed to come out of the House Tax Policy Committee on Wednesday, and those are changing yet today. I'm waiting for the substitute bills. It'll come out of the Tax Policy Committee and should come out of the House and the Senate both by the end of the month. In fact, it has to come out of both by the end of the month, has to be passed with the kind of majority that's needed to give it immediate effect, because if it doesn't, we won't get it passed in time to get it on the August ballot.
If I may, real quick, to elaborate on what Mr. Smith said, it's also a priority of the Speaker, the Senate Majority Leader, and of course, the Governor. And also, what pushes that timeline is the fact that the legislature will recess for the entire month of April, so they're in session for this week and the following week. So I suspect strongly that they'll get it done.
And the other thing you should know is that all of the business groups are behind it, all of the local government groups are behind it, and police and fire unions are supporting it. So when you get that kind of broad-based support, it should go pretty easily.
There additional questions for Mr. Smith? If you care to comment, Ms. Bennett?
But it still has to go through the vote of the people.
Right. There is a, it's still on the primary, it's still all tie-barred together, so if the voters don't approve the shift in the use tax, the reduction in the state use tax, and replacing that with the use tax that'll be levied by the authority, then the whole scheme comes down. But the bet is that if that happens, the majority in the House and the Senate are likely to do something in lame duck. That would be a whole lot less palatable to local governments.
I think that's putting it mildly.
That's what I tried to do, was put it mildly, Mr. Mayor.
I'll give you, I'll give you a little bit more personal insight, which is, I think there's a very strong likelihood that if the proposal were not to pass in August, that there could be majority votes in both the House and Senate to eliminate personal property without any replacement. I think that's...
I think that's fair. I think what they would essentially do is re-adopt Acts 153 and 154. And if you'll recall, when personal property, when those bills passed the first time in December of 2012, they came close to having the votes to do exactly that, and there are still some House members who would prefer that option of eliminating the tax without replacement.
I do want to say, as to piggyback your comments, I do think the vote in August, if I were to prognosticate now at the midpoint of March, would be that it does pass, considering the fact that you just articulated, which is that many of these interest groups, including the Chamber of Commerce, the Michigan Manufacturers, police and fire unions, and local government, MTA and MML, are all behind this. So the stars have sort of aligned.
And they are establishing a fund to help make voters aware of what's happening and to support it. So there's significant support behind this, because for industry, it makes a whale of a lot of difference.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, are there any groups in opposition?
I heard one group speak. They said they were neutral, but I couldn't figure out what the whole motivation was. AFSCME was behind it, was opposed to it in comments at the House Tax Policy Committee last week, but I'm not sure they're entirely opposed to it. I think that they're opposed to the aspect of it that might take $100 million from the state general fund, and they're concerned, I think, that that may affect some of their members who are state employees.
I also think there's a distinction to make between being neutral or opposing the reform and actively campaigning and bankrolling an opposition movement in August.
I don't know of anybody that's doing that.
Thanks.
Mr. Girbaugh, did you have a question, sir?
No.
No, okay. Any other questions for our Legal Counsel? Well, Mr. Smith, this was very helpful. Appreciate it very much. You put a lot of time and energy into this, and I think this analysis is greatly beneficial to Counsel, so thank you, sir. I also think there's a distinction to make between being neutral or opposing the reform and actively campaigning and bankrolling an opposition movement in August.
I don't know of anybody that's doing that.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Girbaugh, did you have a question, sir?
No.
No? Okay. Any other questions for our legal counsel? Well, Mr. Smith, this was very helpful. Appreciate it very much. You put a lot of time and energy into this, and I think this analysis is greatly beneficial to counsel. So thank you, sir. Okay, we move on now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? No? Then we'll move on to the consent. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was asked to make a request. I'm Jessica Steinberg, by the way. The Saline High School would like to make a request to post the French flag in the same place where they were posted for the middle school French exchange. As we are having French exchange, students come from the 14th of April to the 27th of April.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Are there any other citizen comments? No? Okay. Then we move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Move to approve as presented, submitted.
Been moved by Mayor Protam Tahar to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sebo Koenig. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 14-57. This is fiscal year 15 operating and capital budgets for the Saline Area Fire Department. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 11th, 2014 memo from City Treasurer Bennett regarding approval of Fire Department fiscal year 15 operating and capital budgets, and to approve or not to approve the proposed SAFD operating and capital improvement budgets for fiscal years 2014 to 2015 in the total amount of $342,991, and to recommend that the SAFD Board adopt or not adopt said budgets.
Move to approve and to adopt.
Been moved by Councilmember Girbaugh to approve and adopt. Is there a second? Was that Sebo Koenig?
No.
Burgoyne, I'm sorry. Okay? Been moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Burgoyne, to approve and to adopt. I know that our city treasurer is in the audience this evening, as well as our fire chief. Do you care to make any comment? No? Speaks for itself. Chief?
I can.
Okay. You don't have to?
I'd like to hear me talk.
Sure, we do.
Your cheerful face.
Add a little sympathy to the meeting.
And actually, the memo that I gave you kind of spells it out, but I'd like to just read the memo so that others can hear it, so they know where we're at. If that's all right with everybody?
Please.
Okay. Fire Board members, as always when preparing this year's budget, I was aware of the struggles all of you are enduring. Most of the increases in this proposed budget are determined by outside forces, including the cost to retain employees. We made changes to our last budget that will set our employees up for the future. And because of that, I have done as much as possible to make this an uneventful budget and give each entity a chance to catch their breath. We will continue to keep our fundraising efforts for the Friends of the Fire Department account alive and take the stress off the budget, and we will continue to be responsible through these trying times.
Good. Thank you, chief. Are there any questions for our chief?
No, thanks for doing a great job as usual in trying to contain our costs and such. Appreciate it.
And to echo Mr. Girbaugh's comments, and many of you know, because I've spoken at length about this, we are moving forward as a fire board on a pretty aggressive 10-year plan to boost compensation for our firefighters and department employees, because right now they're at the low end of the county. And if we're going to continue to attract and retain a quality workforce, we need to make some improvements. So even though it's tough to spend money in pretty lean economic times, it's the right thing to do, and I strongly support approval and adoption of this budget, and thank the chief for his work. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, it's been properly moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Burgoyne, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 14-58. This is a request for sewer credit for 211 and 1/2 West Henry Street. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 11th, 2014 memo from City Treasurer Bennett regarding the request for sewer credit for 211 and 1/2 West Henry Street, and to approve or deny the request for sewer credit in the amount of $1,037.69. Is there a motion?
Also move?
You're moving to approve or to deny?
To approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Roth, seconded by Burgoyne. Ms. Bennett, do you care to comment on this?
Well, as I outlined in my memo attached with this, Mr. Mraz had contacted the Department of Public Works earlier this month, I think it was in January. He had went by the house to check on his tenant and noticed that there was some water coming out of the front door, and the DPW did observe that there was a broken line. We got the read from our Department of Public Works, and did a bill so that he could kind of know where he's looking at on that. He has replaced the line, remedied the situation with the tenant, and has also paid the water portion of this bill, and is requesting relief of the sewer portion, as most of the water was sitting in the front yard and could have, was frozen for quite a while this year. In the past, the city councils prior have, two instances that I know of, have waived a credit when there's been observation of the water that has been discharged into the yard or into a parking lot, for the two instances.
Are there any questions for our city treasurer? Mr. Roth?
I wasn't, not sure as far as the amount that he's asking for is including the typical amount of water that goes into sewer or not.
Well, because of the bill that we created for him was specific to that timeframe, there we, the $1,037.69 would be the full amount of that bill. However, on his final, you know, on his bill that he'll be getting, we would charge him for his average sewage amount, because there was a tenant in the house.
So he would be paying for that?
He would be paying, yes. We're not going to waive the full, I mean, we would waive the full amount of this bill, but on his quarterly bill, we would adjust for the, you know, the average of his consumption for sewage usage, since there was someone in the building, and we have to assume that there was some sewer usage.
So he's getting, he's not getting something free?
Right.
Okay.
A portion, but not all of it.
Mr. Girbaugh?
Just curious, what were the other two incidences?
There was one at Car Wash, and then there was one at a building located on the west end of town. It was the former waters, or is the Water Softener Hospital. The owners of that property had water leakage, and the water was seeping out the building. In both instances, the city council waived the sewer portion of those bills.
Additional questions for our city treasurer? Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, I'm glad for the clarification. What our motion does is waive the excessive portion. It doesn't waive the whole thing. The normal amount would be paid.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Tahar, did you have a comment or question?
Just to confirm, and there was also no question from the owner about paying the bill for the water that was used.
Oh, no, he paid that.
It's just the...
Right.
Okay, so there was no controversy about that?
Not at all.
Okay. Thanks.
Additional questions? Mr. Girbaugh?
So then, the way this motion is written...
Because this bill...
We should change the dollar amount?
No. This bill that he was issued was not a quarterly bill. This was a specific bill to represent that leak. This was in the middle of a quarter, so now the Department of Public Works has went out, have obtained the reads, and so when I issue that quarterly bill, we are going to adjust that quarterly bill to reflect the 10,000 sewer gallons that he would have used in the typical quarter. In addition to anything that he's read from, you know, that was used from that time that the meter was read till current.
So would it be better not to include this dollar amount in here? I'm just thinking we're...
I'd like to amend my motion.
Well, all right.
If we could.
Yep, you're the seconder, so not, but not the mover, but...
I'd like to suggest to Mr. Roth that the motion be to approve the credit in the amount of $1,0769, provided that, just add the words, provided that a normal amount of sewer charge be paid. So instead of paying something excessive, we would, provided that, they pay a normal amount.
Does that make sense to you, Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Roth, are you amenable to that?
Well, I thought in my questioning, I clarified that it was going to be taken care of. So I really didn't, I don't understand why we need to have change of language.
Just so that the council can be assured that there isn't going to be any waiving of all of his sewer charges.
Okay. If you're amenable to that, I will go with the changes. And I just wanted, I wanted that clarification, and you gave it to me.
Right, yeah. Well, but it, that makes a good sense.
Let me reread the, I'm not going to read the, reread, excuse me, the entire motion, but I will read the addendum or the amendment that Mr. Burgoyne offered, and it's been approved by Mr. Roth. So following the $1,037.69 amount, it would say comma, "to provide that a normal amount of sewer charge be paid." Is that correct, Mr. Burgoyne? Okay. And again, Mr. Roth, you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, so that will be inserted at the end of the motion. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen. Are there additional questions for city staff, either Ms. Bennett or someone else? No? Ms. Bennet, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there further discussion on this motion? No? It's been properly moved to approve, noting the additional language. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 14-59. This is the placement of the Orange Riston sculpture. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 11th, 2014 memo from Mayor Protam Tahar, and to approve or not to approve the installation of the Orange Riston bust at the front entrance of City Hall to the west of the steps, with the exact placement to be determined by the Saline DPW, and to approve or not to approve the transfer of the time capsule from City Hall Lobby to the Saline Area Historic Society for inclusion at the Depot Museum. Is there a motion?
Move to approve and approve.
Been moved by Sebo Koenig to approve and approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. Mayor Protam Tahar, could I turn it over to you to briefly present on this issue?
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, I wanted to say thank you very much, on behalf of the entire committee, to Councilmember Roth, who, last year, when in our annual report, we expressed a desire to see the bust of Orange Riston moved outdoors, as a former member of the Arts and Culture Committee and current member of the Saline Historic Society, took it upon himself to investigate what possibilities there might be for acquiring a pedestal to make that move. So it's thanks to his initial work with Arnett's that we were able to come up with a proposal that we're presenting tonight. And thanks also to former committee chair Nancy Byers for working with Mr. Roth and Arnett's to nail down some of the details. The location that we are proposing, if you can distinguish it on the site map, is, as stated in the memo, just west of the steps, facing the sidewalk, kind of at an angle. And the committee would like to see the bust placed in the landscaped area, in the area covered with vinca, partly because it's a nice location, and also partly to cut down on impediments to the mowing of the lawn next to the steps. We have, subsequent to the drafting of the memo, we have received an estimate through Mr. Rubel for the construction of the cement foundation, and it is under our $1,000 that we're proposing. The artist who created the bust is, and supports the move outside. She designed the bust and used materials that are appropriate for an outdoor placement. So the Arts and Culture Committee is eager to see this happen. It's an important part of our heritage. The Historical Society is also in favor, and we'd like to see the bust in a more highly visible location.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Are there any questions? Mr. Girbaugh?
Was there any consideration to put it up closer to Henry Street, out of curiosity?
Not, no, not Henry Street. There was some early discussion about placing it at the cemetery, at the site of, the original site of his home, and that was an attractive possibility, since the exact location of the house has been determined. But the committee felt, and the Historical Society, I believe, agreed in principle that near City Hall is a more high, more visible location, and we want it to be someplace quite visible.
Actually, I think I misconfused it. I meant Harris Street, actually out in the front, in our plaza that's out, so it would be even more visible, not so close to the building. I'm sorry. Henry Street just rang to me because of Riston's homestead, but...
No, we didn't. One other advantage of the location next to the steps is that it is within the view of the cameras, the security cameras around City Hall, so we were a little bit concerned about security.
Any follow-up questions, Mr. Girbaugh?
No.
Additional questions? Well, I would just make a comment that I enthusiastically endorsed this motion, and I would just echo some of the comments made by Mayor Protam Tahar. The artist, or the sculptor, rather, Liz Rogers, who's a dear friend of mine, did create this bust of our community's founder in the hopes that it would be very visible and displayed outside. So this is following her wishes, and evidently, it was funded in large part by memorial contributions that were derived from her father's death, Ken Rogers, Sr., who actually was a council member here at one time, and Mayor Protam. So I know that family will be very pleased that the sculpture is going to be much more visible and accessible to those in the public and in the community. And I should also note that I've got quite a connection to this sculpture. My grandfather was one of the models for Orange Riston, which, you know, I say was sort of a chuckle, because I think my grandfather was a pretty good-looking dude, and quite frankly, that bust kind of scares me. So I hope you won't impugn the appearance of my grandfather, because he was a pretty good-looking cat. But this, I think this is a good change, and I'm glad that the Arts and Culture Committee spearheaded this. So thank you to your efforts, Mayor Protam, and also Councilmember Roth for assisting. It's greatly appreciated. Is there additional discussion? No? Then it's been properly moved by Sebo Koenig and seconded by Roth to approve and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Move on to our final new business item of the evening, item 14-60. This is installation of bypassing piping. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 17th, 2014 memo from PCF Superintendent Skoll regarding the installation of bypass piping, and to approve or not to approve Kavanaugh Mechanical for installation of the bypass piping line in the amount of $22,636.
Move to approve.
Been moved by Councilmember Girbaugh to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. Mr. Skoll, would you care to present on this, sir?
The money I'm requesting today is to provide plumbing that will allow us to run the water plant in case of mechanical failure of the high-service pumps or routine maintenance. It was plumbing that should have probably been done when the plant was put online, but was overlooked. It's one of those things you didn't know you needed till you need it.
Yeah.
Basically, that's it.
Pretty straightforward. Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Skoll? No? Okay. Bob, thank you. Appreciate you being here this evening. Additional discussion? No? Okay. It's been properly moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Roth, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda this evening. Commission, committee, and task force reports from council members? No commission, committee, or task force reports? Mr. Roth?
I need to report on the task force, the Saline Addiction Prevention Task Force.
Please.
They, we met this past Thursday and had, that was the second meeting they had, and we had lots of input from the public and lots of offers from the public. One of the radio stations offered to run public service ads for us at the price that we can afford, which is at no charge, and they are very committed to our community. Besides, there's several other professional groups willing to lend support and so on. We did come up with, as far as a mission statement, I have the draft of it, so it's to engage all sectors of the community, a, excuse me, to engage all sectors of the community by every means possible, through increased awareness of the prevalence of substance abuse, and provide a cohesive approach to mitigate the negative effects of substance misuse/abuse to keep the city, or to keep Saline, a safe and healthy community. So that's the rough draft of it. community." So that's the rough draft of it, and that's pretty much what's going to be solidified at our next meeting. And the next meeting's going to be two weeks, so we, and so it's also going to be on a Thursday night.
Is that at 7:00 PM?
At 7:00 PM. So it's a very committed group, and desperately that we want to be of help to the community.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Are there additional committee, commissioner, or task force reports? No? Okay. Then we move on to reports and other announcements. Mr. Burgoyne?
Win Big for Kids is Saturday at 6:30 at the Fairgrounds. Um, I have tickets if somebody wants to participate. Um, it's an annual, a third annual event. Nine agencies participate. Police cadets are one of them. Rotary, Kiwanis, Fifth Corner, all get support for their kids' programs. So that's just a quick announcement. Uh, second item I have is, I saw recently on the SEMCOG website that SEMCOG is participating in an effort to obtain more state revenue sharing. This is the sharing of the increase in the sales tax in 1994 that went from four cents to six cents. Um, and they used, they put the following figures out. I think, I'm doing this by memory, but I think I have it. Um, they said that in 2002, distributed to the localities, the cities and the schools and so forth, were $14 billion. That was in 2002. And they said that in 2014, the distribution to the localities will still be $14 billion or so. Now, they compared that to the amount that was kept by the state. In 2002, the state kept $8 billion, and in 2014, the state's going to keep $16 billion. So it appears that, as the economy of the state and the activity and so forth expands, and there are more sales and so forth, the localities are getting the constitutional amount, which, uh, for us, I think is five or $600,000. And then, the amount that can be adjusted by the legislature has been adjusted down, 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 so that the amount that we get, that can be adjusted by the legislature is only in the amount of a hundred-ish, $100,000 or so, or maybe a little more. So the state has been keeping more and more and more of a part of what everybody pays. Everybody pays a higher sales tax. You're not paying four cents anymore. You're paying six cents, six percent. And the state has been keeping more. So SEMCOG is working on this. My thought is, is MML working with SEMCOG? Who all is working on this to try to get a better share for the localities, for the schools and the cities and so forth?
We can confirm that with MML. I mean, they've advocated for increased revenue sharing for many years. I don't know if there's cohesion at the moment between them and SEMCOG, and maybe some of the other entities that advocate for local governments like MTA, but we can certainly check on that.
Yeah. Well, I thought it was very interesting that they just compared 2002 and 2014, and we're dead in the water, and the state is just raking it in.
Yeah. Well, and we, of course, as you saw, Mr. Burgoyne, that economic fact sheet that we developed and distributed last year, we talked at length about, you know, how the loss of statutory revenue sharing to the city has decreased, and, you know, taken in isolated instances, it doesn't seem like a lot, but when you add it all up cumulatively, it's pretty severe, so...
Also, online on the city website, on the annual budget, there is a page there, a chart there, that shows that we're still getting approximately the same amount each year, but that's because the constitutionally required amount to pass through to us has been growing and growing and growing, and the part that they can affect in the legislature has been diminished and diminished, leaves us about even each year, but doesn't grow the way we should have.
Right. And while the cost of everything else continues to decline and increase. Right. Point well taken. And we can check on that and report back. Did you have anything else, Mr. Burgoyne, for reports and other announcements?
Uh, no.
No? Okay. Are there any other reports and other announcements? Mr. Gierba?
Just something I wanted to follow up a little bit on. Um, I'd sent this to Mr. Campbell, I guess, this weekend. The grants and loans related to the local governments for sewer systems and such, did, were we part of this first round, or are we in next year's? Because I see where it said 97 million was awarded, but they did it by lottery, and I didn't know if we were even in part of that.
Sure. You're referring to the SAW grant, correct?
SAW grant money.
Right. Um, we did, we found out last week that we were not in the first round, but we were hopeful that in the next, either the second or third year, as we were kind of in the middle of the pack, I believe we scored. So, um, so the short answer is, you are correct. We did not receive the SAW funding this year.
Yeah, I was disappointed that they said they did it by a lottery instead of by a, um, by a ranking. So, according to the article I was reading...
Well, right, but that's, but, and, but we knew, we knew that going into it.
Okay. I didn't realize that. Thanks.
Yep.
If there are no additional reports and announcements, then we move on to DPW recognition. This is actually, this is a nice thing. So in conjunction with Celine Area Schools and the School Board, we will be jointly recognizing our DPW staff and the school's facility department next Tuesday, which is the 25th of March, from 6:00 to 6:30 at the Liberty School Media Center. Like, it's not really a media center anymore. It's where the Board of Education meets, excuse me. And there'll be a reception from 6:00 to 6:30. Their regular meeting begins at 6:30, and I believe Mr. Campbell, Mr. Graydon, Mr., myself, and School Board President Holden will be speaking and recognizing our folks on the front line for all of their extra efforts this year to keep us safe and to keep our roads clear. We greatly appreciate it. So if your schedules permit, I strongly encourage you to attend. Again, that's next Tuesday, the 25th, from 6:00 to 6:30 at the Liberty School Media Center. If there are no questions related to that, we move on to Police Dispatch. First of all, I want to thank those who attended one or both of our forums that we held last week. I can only speak for myself personally, but I think there were a lot of good questions, concerns, and insights that were shared, and I'm not unmoved by those. I do want to report to council that you will be receiving a email communique from either the chief or city manager in the next few days about scheduling some times to go and observe Myland Dispatch and Washtenaw County Central Dispatch. Because we're considering a change during the overnight hours, we are going to be going and observing them during the overnight hours. So probably somewhere in the 10 to 11 range, and do probably an hour, hour-and-a-half observation, similar to what we did here at our local dispatch. So again, I can't force you to attend, but I would strongly encourage you to do so. We will try and make arrangements for carp pooling, if that's your wish. If you prefer to ride solo, that's fine as well. We'll probably throw out two dates for each. So again, if you are able and interested, I would strongly encourage you to attend at least one at Myland and at least one at Washtenaw County Central Dispatch. And then noting that those should be able to be coordinated and take place in the next couple of weeks. I'm hoping that this issue will be brought back, well, this issue will be brought back as a discussion item at our next council meeting, which I believe is on April the 7th. And I hope to develop some sort of consensus then, whether the consensus is to maintain the status quo or to move in a new direction, because we should be able to coordinate visits, multiple visits to each entity by that point. And I know some of you have some outstanding questions. Mr. Burgoyne has some, I know specifically. Those should be able to be addressed by that point as well. So again, be looking, be looking for, I will be looking, excuse me, for consensus at our next meeting, which is in three weeks on April the 7th. Mr. Burgoyne?
The issue of deciding before we see our budget, I, I hope that when this comes before us, we will at least have the first cut of this year's budget.
It will. Yep, that will be provided. Yep. So be looking for that email, and please respond as soon as you can. We appreciate that. Um, unless there's anything further on Police Dispatch. No? Okay. Then we move on to employee contracts. Mr. Burgoyne?
Last year, I brought up the issue of, um, the amount of severance and the, uh, workman's composition, uh, workman's compensation with regards to the employee contract. And I thought that was going to be looked at last year, but somehow it got missed, and I'd like to come back to it.
Well, we'll make sure to include that as a discussion item during one of our upcoming budget word meetings, Mr. Burgoyne.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on that front, Mr. Burgoyne?
No.
No? Okay. Um, then the last item I have on the discussion portion of the agenda this evening is our water bills and a recent mailing that went out. Um, I don't believe the mailing went out to city council, because to save some postage costs, we just put it in your mailbox. But when you receive your packet or when you go into your mailbox, you will see this flyer that went out. I believe it hit mailboxes last Thursday, Friday, maybe Saturday.
Saturday.
I received numerous inquiries about this at church on Sunday, which is one of the reasons sometimes I don't go, because I get bombarded by municipal questions, but tis the nature of the job, I suppose. Just want to make clear that the new services that we're offering, it's a great service. I encourage you to take a look at it. But the concern that I heard was, well, you're not going to let me pay my water bill by check, either mailing it or dropping it off at City Hall. Just to confirm, that is not the case. If you prefer to continue paying your water bill with a check, whether you put that in the mail, you drop it off at one of the city drop boxes, you bring it into City Hall, that is still your right. You are still welcome to do that, but this is an exciting new option, and I would encourage all of our citizens to take a long, hard look at it. If there are no further discussion items, uh, we move now to our second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
Mary Laronas, 373 West Bennett. Um, I gave each of you, I hope each of you has a copy of the report, the annual report from the Historical Society. There's just a few things that I wanted to bring up from the report for your advantage and for the people out there in TV land. Um, on the front page, a number that always surprises and amazes me is that our garden, which is part of the exhibit of the total, this was what a farm family would have, was a garden for the kitchen. And that garden for the kitchen produced 2,465 pounds of produce for food gatherers. That's just an amazing number. Every week, the food gatherers come and pick up tomatoes and squash and beets and carrots, and, uh, we have done a lot to support that organization, which is sort of a added highlight for the society and the city. Um, I, back on the second to the last page, the total attendance to the two museums and off-site visits and programs was 4,768, probably closer to 5,000 when you count the people who didn't sign in, which is a real benefit to both the society and the city. It does bring people into town. And our volunteer hours totaled 3,853. Again, that's probably a low-ball figure, but based on statistics, that contributed $79,487 in in-kind work. So, um, I think the society and the city together are running this in a very fiscally responsible manner, and it's a benefit to both groups. So, um, and then take note of the acquisitions and permanent collections paragraph. We do have an acquisition committee that's very careful in what they accept. Um, the items that are put into our collections are valuable and worthwhile. They're not just anything that somebody like me might bring in. So a lot of my stuff gets put in the yard sale, too. Um, and so we now have 2,895 artifacts that are accessioned and catalogued with a value of $194,600. This continues to be a very valuable operation for our city. The collaboration between the city and the Historical Society continues to be an asset to both groups, and we want to thank you for enabling our museums to remain in good repair and open to the public. And I do want to say that copies of this report will be available at the Depot Museum, which is open from 11 to 3 on Saturdays. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate you taking the time to share your report. And I do have to say real quick that most of us here on the dais are aware of the great educational programs and tours and amenities that you offer, but to partner with another nonprofit like Food Gatherers and give them fresh produce for people in need is really wonderful. So thank you for that. Please.
Mary Hess, regarding the dispatch question, you had said that it was going to be, the one that was held last Monday would be on Channel 18, and I was hoping, I think the gentleman said it's going to show tomorrow, and hopefully it could show a couple times a day for people to hear the first one. Of course, the one that was held on Wednesday with the snowstorm, I know there's probably at least 10 seniors that wanted to come, but I had even suggested with the snow that it was too dangerous, and I feel it was. Are you going to do a do-over, or, and when are the television's segments of the first meeting? Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that the broadcasts will be done on Channel 18 eminently. It's my understanding that they will run multiple times, so people will have ample opportunity to review them if that's their wish. And this council committed to doing two forums on the dispatch issue, and unless there's consensus to do, to do more, we'll let it stand at that. Okay? Are there any other public comments? No? Then we have our next meeting on April the 7th, which will be at 7:00, or, be at 7:30 PM, but we will have a work meeting on the budget beginning at 6:00. And then we have a meeting on April the 21st at 6:00 PM, a work meeting at 6:00 PM, excuse me, and then a regular meeting at 7:30. You've already excused the absence of Councilmember Rhodes, so at this time, I would seek a motion to adjourn at 8:37 PM.
So moved.
Been moved by Mayor Protem Tahar, seconded by Councilmember Gierba. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, this meeting's adjourned.